Roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Widmer.
Yep, here.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Hawkins Benwellian.
Here.
I'll note for the record that Councilmember DeGolia and Councilmember Holland aren't present now, but if they do become present, I'll make a note for the record.
I'd like to call for a public comment on things that are on the agenda only. Does anyone have any public comment? Anyone online, Anthony? Okay, then I will start with item one, Legislative Lobby Report. And I believe that's you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. In late 2023, the town engaged Joe A. Gonzalez and son as the town's legislative lobbyist group to assist the town in a wide range of issues involving state legislation and legislative advocacy. The Gonzalez team met with key staff to identify various issues of importance to the town, and some of those concerns were listed later in the staff report. These included broad issues of advocacy, addressing issues such as public safety, housing, local control, and fiscal sustainability. The Gonzalez team is present tonight via Zoom to provide the council with an introduction to the team and the firm, an overview of the state legislature, state of the state, I guess, some key issues on the legislative calendar, and provide some insights into the 2024 legislative session. The town, as you know, is also a member of the League of California Cities, CalCities, and their advocacy mission is to expand and protect local control for cities through education and advocacy to enhance the quality of life for all Californians. And they have 476 member cities, so communities like Atherton can get a little bit diluted in their process, and a lot of their issues address bigger communities versus smaller ones like Atherton. So having a legislative lobbyist group like the Gonzalez team to specifically address our needs is much more beneficial to the town. So this study session is an opportunity for the council to meet the team, ask them any questions about the state of the state, and explore how the process works, and review and provide some feedback on important town issues that might benefit from a legislative solution, recognizing that not all issues can be solved via legislation. So with that, I'm very happy to turn it over to Jason, who can introduce, I guess Paul, and start your end of the conversation there.
Well, thank you, Mr. Roderick, and I hope I hope you can hear me. Am I coming through clearly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, members of the Town Council. As Mr. Roderick mentioned, my name is Jason Gonzalez, and I have with me my brother Paul Gonzalez, who's also a member of our firm. We are a family firm that was founded in 1975 by my grandfather after having served four years on the Dairy Valley City Council, which you will now know as the City of Seredos down in Los Angeles County. After his four years on the Dairy Valley City Council, he served 12 years in the State Assembly. So again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. Currently, our firm is the only third-generation lobbying firm to have represented clients before the state legislature. As I mentioned, it was founded by my grandfather, who, and then my father joined him, Anthony, in 1978. I joined in 1998, and Paul joined us in 2004. And just to show that our family hasn't entirely figured it out by now, my daughter had recently worked for Assembly Member Freddie Rodriguez as the only fourth generation to work in the Capitol and is now working for the California Civil Justice Association. So our firm, as Mr. Roderick mentioned, our firm specializes in representing small and medium-sized cities. We intentionally do not represent the large cities, the Big Ten or our Big 13, I guess we're up to nowadays, as we're oftentimes at odds with the large cities in the budget battles such as property tax shifts, E-RAF shifts. And I use the term shifts kind of loosely because I don't want to digress too much, but they're really not shifts. During the good times, our client cities and towns do not get the revenue, and during the bad times, if they, you know, we remind members of the legislature, given the current circumstances, it's not a shift, it's a taking when they're when they're taking your revenue. But we're oftentimes at odds, again, with the large cities and, you know, given the ongoing, I say ongoing, as of last year and and the future budget projections, you know, we'll be prepared to look out for E-RAF shifts, reversing excess E-RAF payments, you know, issues that are specific to your town and critically important to your financial viability. As you may know, our firm represents our clients on an all-inclusive monthly retainer. We do so at the direction of the city manager and obviously at the mayor and town council's direction. No matter the issue you may have, we encourage our clients to call in our firm, even if it's something you think we may not be able to to help with. Most of the time, I'd say 99 times out of 100, we we come up with the strategy to at least address the issue and most of the time successfully address the issue. Our approach is to work with your legislators and the governor's office on down to to be cooperative and and get through, again, no matter the issue, work through it and to either mutually or successfully resolved manner for the for the town. Just very briefly, and I'll try to be brief on this, but I think it's important to look at last year's legislative session and and a little bit of what may be on the horizon this upcoming session. Last year, and these numbers are kind of staggering and maybe come dizzying when you think about them, but last year, the state legislature introduced 2,663 bills. Of those 2,600-plus bills, 1,046 were sent to Governor Newsom, and he had the legislature adjourned on September 14th. The governor had until October 14th to take action. The governor signed 890 of those 1,046 bills and vetoed 156. So the legislature, there's no shortage of bills being proposed in Sacramento. And as you likely know, the legislature reconvened this year on January 3rd, and we have until February 16th for the bill introduction deadline. We will see another 2,000 plus or minus bills between now and February 16th introduced. And just to highlight kind of the pressure cooker of of the legislative process, the bills get introduced, most of them will be around, will be on February 16th. Constitutionally, they have to be in print for 30 days. So most bills aren't eligible until middle of March to even receive their first policy committee in the House of Origin, meaning all assembly bills in the Assembly, Senate bills in the Senate. The legislature goes on recess the end of March for spring recess. We will have April, May, and June. They're gone the month of July, and then they're back the month of August for those 2,000-plus bills to work their way through the House of Origin and the Second House. Policy committees, fiscal committees, and about four months of actual hearings and deliberations on those bills. So when you take the legislative session, it compresses rather quickly, and it, you know, we have our work cut out for us collectively to, one, obviously stay on top of the issues and and two, make sure the town's voice is heard on any significant issues or issues of importance. One thing I I should note and can't stress enough, our firm does not take positions for our clients. We fully understand and very much appreciate those that are elected, and you put your names on the ballot, we look to you for the positions, again, through your city manager, and we advocate each step of the way once that position is conveyed to our firm, meaning we'll show up in policy committee on your behalf, meet with the consultants in advance, work with the governor's office, and and we follow that position through throughout the process. We anticipate an ongoing focus of housing, homelessness, and public safety issues to continue within the legislature. The housing one is, public safety's been a challenge in the past, but the housing one will continue to be particularly difficult for cities and towns such as Atherton. The one-size-fits-all approach obviously does not work. I've oftentimes argued if we're going to do one-size-fits-all, we wouldn't use the city and county of San Francisco as the template. And, you know, in prior years, we have seen the chairs, no disrespect to Senator Weiner or others, but the chairs of the housing committees have been from San Francisco. And obviously, what San Francisco's development horizon may look like is very different than the town of Atherton's. So that will continue, the local control and respecting and local government's local land use authority will continue to be a struggle, one we're prepared for in Sacramento, but that push will continue. On the public safety side, the pendulum has swung back towards law and order. I have jokingly said that perhaps it could have swung further away from law and order, but we have seen select committees on public safety, on retail theft. As you've likely seen, the governor has ramped up the California Highway Patrol's presence in the city of Oakland and and other parts of of the state. And and we're starting to see kind of the enough-is-enough attitude coming out of Sacramento. And that also is carrying over to things like the fentanyl crisis and others. So I I think for local public safety, the proposals we anticipate being vetted through Sacramento will will move back towards, again, local law enforcement and protecting your citizens and your constituents, as well as private properties and and businesses throughout the state. The the overarching challenge in Sacramento last year, the governor's fifth year, was his first budget deficit. The state had enjoyed up to 100-plus billion-dollar surpluses. Last year was the first deficit, and unfortunately, on the state's budget deficit projection, it's not gotten any better. The governor on January 10th proposed the the release the governor's proposed budget, and the legislative analyst, which is the nonpartisan legislative analyst, projected a $68 billion deficit. We've had the largest divide between the legislative analyst and the governor we've ever had because the governor's projection is 38 billion. You know, the old adage, a billion here, a billion there, it's real money. They're about $30 billion apart, but regardless, the state has a multi-billion dollar deficit ranging from 38 to 68 billion dollars on a projected $300 billion state general fund budget. When we talk about $68 billion deficits, I think it just puts it in perspective to note that former Governor Pete Wilson's last budget in 1998 was $68 billion for the entire state of California. We're looking at potentially a deficit as large as what we used to run the entire state on 25, 26 years ago. Just very briefly on leadership, I think it's worth noting, as of July of last year, the Assembly elected a new Assembly Speaker, Assembly Member Robert Rivas, out of the Salinas area. This past Monday, February 5th, the Senate elected a new President Pro Tem, Senator McGuire, who's from the Hildsburg area. It goes Hildsburg all the way up to the Oregon border. It's the first time since 1997 we have had two leaders, both the Speaker and Pro Tem, from the north. Oftentimes, you see a LA-San Francisco split. In this case, we'll have two leaders from the north, and it's particularly interesting or just makes me feel old because we have two leaders that are 44 years young. Full of energy, great legislators, but very different from when I started, again, back in 1998. As you know, 2024 is an election year. It seems like election years never end. Of the 120 members of the legislature, all 80 Assembly seats are up. 20 of the 40 Senate seats are up. And so of the 100 members of the total 120, 100 are up. We will have 35 new members after November 2024. Couple that with 37 new members from 2022, and seven, which equals 72 members of the legislature, starting in December of this year, will have served two years or less. It obviously means our work is cut out for us in educating them about the town, the town's priorities. I I know your legislators are here and are likely to to get reelected. They're all very good legislators, Senator Becker, Assembly Member Berman. They're they're close friends. I know Assembly Member Pappin has a small piece of the town. Aging myself again, I I lobbied when her father served, and and she all she too, we work very well with, and and when the issues are communicated to them, I think your legislative delegation is prepared and and will be very productive and supportive of the town's positions. So with that, I apologize in advance for being potentially too long-winded. It's a pleasure to be before you. Look forward to the opportunity to meet in person and very much appreciate your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have other than perhaps where is the $68 billion going to come from. Thank you again for your time this afternoon.
Is is that, are you going to do anything else, or is that the end of the presentation on that?
All right, that's the end of, I think, Jason and Paul's presentation, but the opportunity here is for the council to provide them with some feedback on what local issues of concern you might see, where you think we should provide some some focus. I think I outlined what our current process is for getting letters of opposition and support out there. The council is well aware of how that works. The Gonzalez team do work relatively quickly or can work relatively quickly to bring our issues to bear on appropriate legislators. But they're probably here to to listen to what's important. Legislative Action Days are in mid-April, so if there's any members of the council going up to Sacramento for that in mid-April, there might be an opportunity to meet with Jason and or Paul and meet with the legislators around that same time.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzalez, for your presentation. It covered the the whole spectrum, and the first thing that you mentioned was, and I want to look at this from our perspective of the housing element and the housing issue, that is the biggest issue that's facing Atherton right now. And you indicated that it doesn't seem that one-size-fits-all for California, like Senator Weiner representing the city of San Francisco. And I remember when it was just in the the very baby stages, I think both Councilmember DeGolia and I lobbied Senator Weiner and saying, you can't be serious about creating this kind of one-size-fits-all, and that includes our town. So I guess my question to you is, do you see on the horizon for 2024 legislative bills that might percolate up that there would be any movement to carve out some special conditions for cities such as ours, small, unique, residential-only, with no available public lands to rezone or blighted areas of retail or industrial to upgrade into housing like some of our neighboring cities have? And to then possibly modify the restrictions and the requirements for the housing element requirements for us?
It's a very good question, and I would say we see quite a bit coming down the pipe or on the horizon as it pertains to housing, probably moving in a in the opposite direction, more in the way of mandates, and and we're prepared to play defense. I think the uniqueness of your town, much like we've represented the town of Los Altos Hills, and and we were able to work through the housing element process, I think the we can pursue a legislative opportunity, potential opportunity there, as well as working with HCD from the director on down and trying to have some logical conversations. I use the term logical intentionally and and maybe overly optimistically, but I think we have to work on a parallel path is the answer, whether that's through the legislature and or through HCD. But you're not alone, even though as unique as the town of Atherton is or Los Altos Hills, but cities throughout the state are are struggling with these one-size-fits-all top-down approaches, and and really, it's the RENA process. And, you know, and then if you fall into builder's remedy because you don't get a certified housing element or all the other ramifications, they're legitimate threats and and they're daunting threats. I harken back to when it used to be the waste board on recycling, and I know it's not totally germane, but the waste board became this powerful entity that we spent a lot of time and energy educating about our our client cities. And we're having to do that with HCD these days, and and they're really becoming more beholden or emboldened, I should say, and if we work with them, I think we can be successful. So I apologize, it's a long-winded answer, but there's several paths I see us having to pursue on on your behalf.
I have a more, to follow in what she was saying, I have a more specific sort of scenario, which is in our particular community, we have a university that has college dormitory housing. And in other parts of the state, there were circumstances where they allowed dormitory housing for seniors to to qualify for something. So it seems as though somewhere in the line, there's some precedent for that. If we wanted to find like cities, and I understand you represent like 55 cities, if if we wanted to find other like cities that would also benefit from having the dormitories counted as low-income housing? And how would you be able to help us through the process of of making something like that happen, where we could find legislators who would pick it up? And how would you, can you explain how you would do that or if you would do that?
Oh, wait, wait, before you answer, let me just make a slight. Let me make a slight adjustment. If you want to. I'm, I don't want it to come to my mouth. So just a slight adjustment, rather than focusing on making dormitories low-income housing, which they have all kinds of definition that defines low and low and different scale of income housing. The the critical issue is for dormitories to be considered housing under the RENA numbers. And every town and city in California that has a college or a university has this issue because every one of those schools is providing housing to at least some of their students. And when the and the reason that the the low-income housing issue is relevant is because when students fill those dorms, they leave lower-cost housing in the community, and that frees up low-cost housing to other people. So it is absolutely in the interest of the housing advocates to enable that because it brings up low-income housing, it frees up low-income housing. But I think the the legislative issue is to get dormitory housing and and as Diana said, but you can define that as to qualify under the RENA numbers. And I think that's a legislative thing that's really important.
So going back to my question, then, Bill, you're next. How would you help us and how would that work? Because I'm new to this process, so explain how we can, you guys could help on that. Let's just pick that one example.
Absolutely, and I appreciate the question as well as the follow-up to the question, and and I think both approaches are are kind of synonymous or are consistent with what we've worked on in the past. Amongst our client cities, I am confident we can build quite a coalition around the issue. It has been an uphill climb. I'll use an example, the city of Indian Wells in Riverside County, about 1,800 residents, but their daytime population and they is obviously much larger, especially with festivals and what have you. But city of Indian Wells would be a natural ally on this, on the city of Palm Desert, because they have College of the Desert out in that region. And in Ventura County, we have cities that I think would partner. So we can work with your legislators, our other client cities legislators, identify the appropriate author, meet with your legislators and and kind of build the foundation of the discussion. It's one, again, that's been met with resistance. I struggle with it. If if college housing or student housing or even the workers on the colleges, that's not affordable housing, you know, I don't know what else is. So we, that's what we do on a regular basis. We can, there's a number of paths through your legislators, through the governor's office. One example, rarely used, but we have used it. The Senate Office of Research could do a report. We could have the state senator raise the question, and the Senate Office of Research could do an analysis as to whether or not these housing units should be counted towards RENA and be counted as affordable. So we would welcome the opportunity to to work with you, your legislators and the administration, and build a coalition around the issue.
Mona, do you have a question about that? Otherwise, I'll give it to Bill and then come back to you. If you're building on that one, then I'll take you.
Yeah, I actually, I just wanted to build on what Councilmember DeGolia mentioned. One of the other arguments that the town would be making in support of that position is that housing that is located on campus also reduces or eliminates vehicle miles traveled, which is a CEQA analysis that we would do. And a lot, and and Scott Weiner also is a champion of CEQA. But housing legislation oftentimes exempts some development projects from CEQA review. So these two would actually be a very harmonious interpretation of housing law and CEQA. And it is the environmentally superior option because in addition to providing more opportunities for those who need affordable housing within the community, we are providing housing on campus, and the students no longer have to be concerned about driving to and from as much.
Awesome. Bill?
I've got several items, but to follow on on this one, I'd brought it up to Senator Becker several times, that if these students were not in the dorms, they would be living in an apartment somewhere else, which is what Rick alluded to. And so it actually is helping housing, may maybe not in our or opening up housing, maybe not in our community, but in other communities. So it's actually a a net benefit to the state. Now, with regards to housing, I got two other additional questions and then one further comment. Every year, a slew of housing stuff comes, and you said that you're going to see another one. Each one of those serves to tighten the restrictions and makes makes them harder to meet. And, you know, I think it's it's important that we get an early view on what those are, and and we try and fight those. I think that we've got enough restrictions on us already. And so I I would would appreciate if we maybe we could get monthly reports or something like that with regards to those, so that we can research that and give you some feedback because that's that's what's happening over, you know, as you even pointed out. You know, last year had a heck of a lot of new housing laws, okay? One of the housing laws is putting an ADU right on the street, which, you know, actually ruins the character of the of the community. And the regulations around the 800-square-foot or less ADUs with them being able to take down heritage trees is really ludicrous. You know, the trees take years and years and years to develop to where they're heritage. And we're just saying, okay, we're going to build an 800-square-foot shed, so to speak, and we can take down all the trees in that area. It just doesn't make any sense. Plus, it infringes on the neighbor's, you know, security and the neighbor's privacy. Lastly, my last comment is on, and and you alluded to this, on the withholding of funds that that are actually rightly do ours. We don't make much money on property tax, okay? Eight and a half cents for every tax dollar. That's a lot less than what a lot of other communities have. And with the state continuing to threaten and take more and more away or withholding it and saying, maybe we'll come back and grab it, it's it's really, it's really impacting how we can perform our business here and protect our residents and continue to develop our parks and things like that. So that's kind of a hot button of of mine as well. So I appreciate you listening, and I appreciate, you know, you all representing us, and hopefully we can make some progress here.
And Councilmember, I very much appreciate you sharing your concerns. And and as I mentioned, as part of the initial presentation, we take our direction through your management team at your direction. But to take the concerns just briefly in order, and I I should have stated this at the outset, you will receive on a weekly basis, once the bills are introduced, so post-February 16th, our firm reads all the bills, all amendments, and Our firm reads all the bills, all amendments, and we sort through once we feel are could have an impact on your town. And then we send them to your management team and some we just watch because we can see what direction they're going in. But because of the hot-button items, it used to be one weekly report. We now break it out into a general local government report, a housing report and a public safety report. And that's so that it tries to narrow it down by issue areas. Because when there's twenty-five hundred bills introduced, it becomes overwhelming if you have a report with, you know, a hundred fifty, two hundred bills on it. So we try to to tailor it down and and we will provide updates on a weekly basis. And obviously, anything you take a position on, the updates come much more frequently. Um as for, you're absolutely right, um the housing, it it's we're seeing a unfortunate trend of trying to circumvent local land use authority. And by right, approval has become kind of a buzzword in Sacramento. And it's one we push back on and we expect to continue to have to push back on. And then lastly, on shifting of local funds, I I refer to it as robbing Citibank. Um and again, they don't give you the money when times are good and why take your money? Well, that is rightfully local revenues. And your property tax rate is in line with with our client cities. We call them the no and low property tax cities. Um they receive eight cents or less on the dollar and and um we're united when we get into the these budget battles. We we don't have cities like the Oaklands or the San Franciscos that get forty-plus percent share of the property tax. But we share your concerns and appreciate the opportunity to work together.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
To follow up on what Diana asked, which was if if we want to encourage you or participate or somehow me create a mechanism that brings a bill related to the these dormitory types of housing to be qualified under RENA in this legislative year. What what how do how do you make that happen or how can we help make that happen or what? How do how does that happen?
By way of timing, we're in the second year of a two-year session, so all bills have to pass by August thirty-first. Ledge Council deadlines to introduce led to introduce language, the Ledge Council has passed. The bill introduction deadline is February sixteenth is quickly upon us. We can always find a bill and amend into the process. The way to make that happen is we have to work with your management team, work on the messaging. Sit down with whomever, the mayor, the council, whomever would like to come to Sacramento, sit down with the committee, the housing committee chairs. HCD, as painful as that may or may not be, and and start laying the groundwork for support of that effort. We can also bring in, as I mentioned, other client cities. At your direction, we can do it on behalf of the town of Atherton. If we want five, ten additional cities in support, if we want to reach out to the league. We can, we can coordinate that together. But the short answer is we have to start communicating with the legislative leadership, your legislators, the chairs of the committee committees, the committee staff and get their buy-in and then things move rather quickly on the legislative side. We just have to build the foundation.
So so what's the first step?
Identifying the issue, which I think we have done so tonight, but putting it on paper, kind of a white paper. Enumerating the number of potential units, we would be you know, able to to qualify or quantify as part of your arena as as affordable. And potential expansion of units to the extent there's any development opportunities are are furthering that that process. So we have to just lay off the issue in a fair amount of detail. And our firm will set up a round of meetings in Sacramento, work with Mr. Roderick and he planned to spend some time in Sacramento and and walk through the issue and and advocate for it. I know that's oversimplifying it, but we I would call it an action day on the issue with a series of meetings and with the pertinent committees as well as the administration and and HCD.
Does the timing of that match with the upcoming legislative days?
I I think what Jason's more in need of is perhaps myself, Brittany, Mona. And maybe one member of the council to sit down with a member of their team via Zoom at first, really talk through the issue, talk about units, talk about potential units, as you mentioned, with potential development at the Menlo College. Uh and then, once that's done, maybe take a trip to Sacramento. Clear it out a little more, talk with some legislators, have a one-day focused legislative action day with one member of the council, myself. And Mona's already there, so that's helpful.
Yeah, I like I like this one because it's very specific and discreet. What what Elizabeth was saying is what we really need is to push some sort of legislation where they make exceptions for communities that don't have, because they passed all these things to make it doable, but we don't have any of them. So that's a little bit of a harder sell, I think, and a harder push, but I'm not opposed to trying to figure that out too and pursuing that one.
Well, I could talk with 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 you outside of this if you want to get a volunteer from the council, the help work with staff on that. I don't think you need a subcommittee, just at least one member of the council.
Okay, Stacy, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I had a couple of things. Um back to the budget thing. Um I, it sounds like you want to defend our money, which is great, but one additional argument that I would make is that we are spending a huge amount of resources trying to execute this housing plan and it's affecting our budget. So when they're coming for someone or some of our revenues, it's going to impact our ability to govern and to execute these state mandates. So add that arrow to your quiver. Um another bill that I am am paying attention to was introduced by or co-authored by Mark Berman. It's AB nineteen ninety-nine that would be um repealing CPUC's ability to do income-based pricing for our electricity. That will really impact our residents. It also will, from a town perspective, impact our ability to reach our sustainability goals. If we're asking residents to electrify their homes, which is also a state mandate. Doing that in parallel with having their electricity rates massively increased will be a huge lift for us. So our assemblyman is the co-author, so he's obviously on board. I'm wondering if you can help him shepherd that bill through uh the legislature. I know, but they, it was like a one sentence in a massive bill that just kind of snuck by everybody is my understanding. So I I think this will have a big impact on our residents, so I'm hoping you can help him.
Ab- absolutely, and I know Assemblymember Pappens on that bill as well. There's about, I'm guestimating fifteen to twenty legislators on that bill and I I think I overheard, um you know, some of this action had been previously taken. This is really a reaction to the issue. Um and if that's the direction of the mayor and town council, we absolutely can um be very helpful in in securing passage of that legislation.
I think we're strongly in favor of that.
Yeah.
There there's no question. I mean, I I think what Stacy said is exactly right.
Yeah, it's ironic that Berman voted for it and supported it. Now he's authoring the bill to roll it back. He should have read it first time.
We don't want consistency, do we? I'm kidding.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
I think you have an opportunity for public comment on this item as well.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Uh can we call for a public comment? Are there any, Anthony? I don't see any in the room.
All right, thank you, Jason. Thank you, Paul. Uh we'll be in touch on the um the college dormitory issue.
Thank you, and it and it sounds like we'll be working on AB nineteen ninety-nine as well, but very much again, can't thank you enough for the opportunity and look forward to working with you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, nice to meet you guys.
Likewise.
Number two is feedback and direction on community survey. Again, we have George on this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The last community survey conducted by the town, large town-wide community survey uh was in twenty thirteen and it was attached to this agenda item. Uh while the focus of that survey was largely on the feasibility of renewing the parcel tax, the survey also addressed quality of life and service delivery questions. A refresh of that survey would benefit the town now. Uh in in particular, because the town center is complete and we're moving on to other projects throughout the community and service delivery issues. If the town were to move forward uh with a community survey, I'd recommend that the council engage a professional survey consultant to assist, such as Godby Research or EMC or others. Uh it's also, uh it's likely that a full-scale customer service satisfaction survey could exceed my budgetary authority. So a formal request for service would be or request for proposal would be released. Approval of the vendor would need council approval as well as a budget amendment. If the council chose to do it in current fiscal year, we'd we'd add it to the budget amendment as part of the mid-year adjustment now. Or we could do it at the in the new fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five, add it to that budget as a new item. Um if the councils desire us in moving forward, I need some basic direction from the council tonight, no formal motion, just direction. Do you want to conduct the survey? Uh do you want to do it in the current fiscal year or add it to next fiscal year's budget? Uh do you want to engage a survey professional, which I strongly encourage? Uh and I would also encourage that we include maybe one member from each of our town designated groups uh such as Park and Rec, uh ADAPT, Park Foundation, all of our committees. Uh and then do you want to form a subcommittee of the council to assist and the council could subcommittee would assist by you know, once we get the RFP on the street and get some consultants uh with proposals, you the subcommittee assistant interviewing those consultants, making a recommendation to the city council and then in the survey creation with members from each of the other committees and staff. So that's that's important.
Okay, um do we have any public comment or questions? Any public comment? Wow, okay. Uh does anyone have any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yeah.
So I've I've heard from several people from uh some of the committees that have said that they uh really want to participate in this. So I think that George's idea, which had come out on Friday, maybe they read your report, but uh it seems to have taken and people do want to participate. And 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 I think that that it's an important thing for us to do. We haven't done one in a while. Whether we do it, squeeze it in before now or now or move it towards the, you know, the next fiscal year, I don't really think it makes any difference except for you know, it wouldn't be good to release that during the summertime and and the first couple of weeks of school when people are tied up in back-to-school nights. We want to get a good response. The last response had about seven percent response. Hopefully, we could get more. But um I do think that, you know, hearing what the people say and what the what what the residents say with regards to the goals that we've set and reinforced last year. Um I, you know, I think that the town needs to, you know, understand those and then be able to input into what they would like to see in each one of those goals. So um I'm supportive of this. I think your committee idea uh is is a good one and it would get, you know, the the different, you know, different committees involved. And um and I think it would give us some good feedback for us to consider moving forward.
Um I agree with what Bill said. I um I think we should definitely hire outside help to do this. My big worry is that it's an election year, which means everyone's mailboxes are getting loaded up with flyers that people are going to miss. They're getting robocalls. So I think if we tried to do it ourselves, we would have not a great response. Um so we definitely need help with someone who can help us navigate best timing for that. Um and I do think I'm a little nervous having it be an election year that we're basically doing campaign research for
Good point.
candidates. Um so, you know, I think we need to do it and I think it's really good information that we should have sooner, but it does make me a little uncomfortable, so.
Perhaps do it in January next year.
Yeah, or start it in the summer and the results come out closer to election day.
And I concur with your uh views on this, and I think that we should really consider uh doing it next year. Um sometime maybe um whatever, early spring or, you know, late fall. But you know, as soon as possible, but certainly not in this election year. It's for all the reasons that you articulated, you're absolutely correct about that. And uh but we do need to uh do something and survey the the town. Um and it has to be kind of printed, you know, to go as well as online, so it's all the multifaceted uh approaches to get as many people involved as possible. Um and we've used Godby before over the years and they're still around. I don't think it's just Mr. Godby himself still doing it. But, you know, a good organization, so that will give us a good direction. But um and involving all the committees, you know, all the various because we have a lot more committees than we used to and a lot more people on those committees that are the eyes and the ears and the pulse of the community. So they'll have good input.
Yeah, and maybe on the committees front, we should make sure we're including our non-Brown Act committees, like this new youth committee, the Atherton Arts Foundation, all those rail committee type people. But I don't know how long it takes to do a survey. Like, we could start it this year with the goal of having it go out after election day. I don't I don't know how long these things would typically take.
You could, as a council, you could budget it for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget cycle. We would start that in July and start with the RFP process, engage a consultant and slow-track the formation of the survey, really get the input into that and then put it out on the street with a target of January, February, twenty-twenty-five.
One thing that'd be great to get the results of this prior to any uh of our retreats when we have our goal retreats. Because it would then focus our goal retreat around, this is what the residents think, the top priorities.
This year's goal retreats or next year's?
Sounds like it's going to be next year, so after what everyone just said.
This year's goal retreat.
In the long run, I'd like to see it feed in and then that could use to fine-tune what we discuss as a group when we can figure out how to best implement. We have a, Rick, have a comment?
No, Walt has a comment.
He was pointing to Walt up there, so.
Pointed out that when you take public comment, you have somebody up there.
Well, I took it early back and take it again because we're not that formal, I guess. Is that okay? All right.
Walt, is he still there, Anthony?
He isn't. Sorry, I missed the button when it was public comment. I apologize. I I would encourage you, uh I'm I'm on Park and Rec, as you know, and this is my own view. Um I'm giving a lot, a number of comments about what should the park be doing, how should it do? You know, you know, we did a survey on on the playground. Uh and I would encourage you to look back at the twenty-thirteen survey, separate survey was done on on the park. And it's from which we came up with the master plan. And I thought it was very well done. Uh I didn't look like it took anybody terribly sophisticated as far as a consultant. Gives us a lot of good questions, uh and particularly, we now have some new issues, of course. Uh and as you get into it, the time you're you're going to do it, you would have all the pickleball experiment done. Uh so we could have part of that. Um I I understand your comment about, well, we get a lot of information. Well, I I think the information from from the political front uh it kind of tails down after the March uh so-called preliminary, which is actually a real election. So um you know, I I would encourage that. Uh I I know you want to have to worry about budget issues, but I would look at that park one. I would very much encourage something like that to go out. Because we received quite a few interesting comments uh on the playground. But of course, people didn't even, didn't respond when they saw the first question, which is how often do you go to the playground? Uh and so they didn't really respond, but those that did added some extra comments. Uh and uh if you look back at twenty thirteen, you'll see the same issues. They didn't like the the uh the restrooms there. Uh they wanted things to stay open. Uh so there's some real issues there, uh open space. So anyway, I would encourage you to do that and and to encourage the inclusion of that. Uh and thank you for saying you would involve the committees. Because if you look at that survey, you'll see that a lot of the very constructive stuff came from the Atherton Dames uh and two other uh groups. So I I think you'll get a lot of good feedback. I understand you want to hear people say they don't like the drainage and stuff like that, but uh I'm bad to see on that. There's a lot of good, I think, that could come with it, so thank you. Uh, I'm glad to see how on that, there's a lot of good, I think, that could come with it. So thank you.
Yeah, I'll point out also that a member, the president of ADAPT, sent a letter. And uh, they're very interested in doing the, in asking some questions and a lot of them have expressed urgency on time. But what's interesting, when you look across the different cities and how they've approached it, and thank you, George, in your thing, you listed. Actual surveys from other towns and it seems as though it's running, it comes in two flavors. One is, you know, kind of community satisfaction with services, which they all seem to do. And then second, each community then tailors some key questions. So when you look at the one in Redwood City, it was, it was crime, it was housing, it was things like that. And so we have some of those here that are new to us. So the the problem with extending it with all our different groups. Each of our group is going to come forward with a list like what we just heard, and I looked at that survey that was done in twenty thirteen for the park and it was very good. And the information you get from that does allow them to go forward. Now, ADAPT will probably want to do the same thing and they'll all want to do it, and then we have our own city questions. So I think that we should start sooner rather than later, just to collect the whole, the field of questions that we can be asking. And then I think it will be an interesting lift to kind of pare it down to be a one manageable twenty minute survey. So I I think that uh even if the actual survey is conducted after the election. I think that we maybe want to start the process earlier.
I have a clarification. Are you saying after the election, meaning like what Walt was referring to of the March primary? Or after the November election?
It sounded like Stacy was saying November, so.
After November.
I think it should be, yeah, I've.
That's, that's my feeling.
Yeah.
Ag, but but I heard Walt say, you know, it's pretty much over all the hysterics with the primary in March. But that's not the.
I don't think it will be.
There's gonna be a ton of stuff coming to your mail, requests for surveys. Yeah.
Right. So to clarify, we're saying after November, we we will be free to start actually doing something. But in terms of collecting information from our own, forming the subcommittee and doing those previous steps, I think we should do those now.
Yeah.
Uh, go ahead.
Rick and Litterwood, uh, um, tell me again, what's, I don't understand this, what's the reason for not doing it before the election?
I have two. Um, one, we, I don't think people will see the survey because they're getting.
Be too busy with everything else.
There's, it's gonna get lost in all the outreach happening around both November and March elections. Because don't forget, it's presidential senate and congress. So beyond all the. And then also, there is, could be concerning basically doing campaign research. For someone if those results were to come out early.
For campaign research for.
Run for.
For our council.
Our city council, we have two open seats or two seats up for reelection.
That's the question I have. So what's the downside? Of the current council and anyone else looking to run for knowing what the residents really want?
Is it appropriate use of town resources is the question.
Well, you're gonna, you're, of course, it wasn't appropriate, but you shouldn't do it at all.
Yeah, I I shouldn't be engaging with you on this one, but I think it's more of the, the response will be impacted by the election.
If it would come out before they finish their campaign, they would modify their campaign, you know, you know. And we're not pushing it off too far. Uh, you know, I I really think rushing it is the wrong thing.
Oh, no, I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing rush it, I'm just saying. I don't see the downside of the current council and anyone else. When they run for office in November, knowing what the current residents want. Why is that bad?
You know, we're not, we're not gonna send, spend taxpayer dollars to go ahead and make campaign platforms.
Where I, if you, no one's saying that.
I I think the, we appreciate your comments.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Thanks, good point. So to follow up on what everyone was just saying, I think that it's gonna take us till November, realistically anyway. To be able to reach out to all these different groups, get their input, create and distill it down and do all that. I think that that's. I think there'll be a lot of information, so I think it's gonna take a minute. And I don't think we'd realistically be able to reach out and start doing any methodology before November anyway. So I think it's, you know, it's gonna work itself out anyway.
But what different groups are you?
ADAPT is one, because they've, they've.
But but what George has suggested is we don't have to reach out to any groups, we'll create a committee.
Yes, but the committee will talk to each of our town groups to get their input.
That's their business, but why, why is that gonna, I don't understand why that's such a time consuming process. Create a committee with one person from each of the different committees. Yes, that representative is going to talk within their committee about what they would want to do. And provide their perspective, but. I don't, I don't, how long do you think it takes to put something together?
I would say it's probably a good two months, two to three months before we would get a consultant on board. And then another two months at least, talking to each of those groups, trying to get their input. And then another month or so to whittle that down into a manageable survey that people would actually answer. So that's what. And you got summer in the midst of that.
But but if that's, I think. But if that's like this, about a.
Six month.
Alongside a six month process.
Yeah.
Um, that means we get something that is workable with the end of, you know, it. Maybe August is closed in September, right? I mean, that is.
Starting now, right.
So we get something in September. I I think we could have a good survey by September. I don't know why we couldn't. I I think that Walt's suggestion of looking what was done in the twenty thirteen, that should certainly be part of it. It's not gonna be hard for the committee to look at what previous surveys have been used. And uh, there'll need to be some discussion that no doubt will come back to the council, but that's an iterative process. That we can engage in and each of the committees with their representatives can engage in as they wish. Um, it seems to me that it's possible to have something realistically by September.
Right.
Question then comes up, which is what Stacy raised, is does it make sense for us to go out with a survey? In the September time period. It's not the summer. Going out with a survey in the summer would be absolutely wrong because people aren't around. But September to October, which is when people would be responding to the survey, is a good time to get people. But there's a November election and they're gonna be getting as many flyers as we're getting right now for the March election. And does that mean they're just gonna throw them out like we throw out the fires? It it it's absolutely a fair question. So may, maybe, so i- if we think that's, I'm, I'm not at all worried. About people that are candidates getting information from the survey. I think that's an irrelevant issue. I think that this survey goes out in September, October, whoever's running for the council already has whatever they're running on. Baked and and I, and I agree, the more information they know about the town's residents and what the residents want, the better. I'd like everyone who's running for council to have that information today. So I'm not at all worried about that. Um, but I, but I do think there's a valid concern. About people not responding as fully in the September, October timeframe. Because they're in the middle of all this garbage coming to them regarding the election. And maybe that means we should wait until January, February. Well, after, at, right at, no, 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 that's why I said wait till Se- till January, February. Going out in, over the holidays isn't the right thing.
To some degree, our experts are gonna help us with that, because they're gonna tell us what the best approach for our particular citizen is. How we're gonna get a sample.
But I'd say from, from our side, it it's a good idea for us to initiate this process now.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that.
If we get the information by September, it just gives us more time to reflect on it if we wait until January.
I agree, we need to have the committee made and we need to start following the different organizations and and. And working with Godby or whoever we're gonna use to prepare something.
Through, through the chair, Mayor, uh, I would just like to add one other benefit of starting the committee process. Earlier rather than waiting is that it will get the buzz out. It will get the word out. It's sort of like building on the centennial we did.
And and I think it should be, we should position it as building on the centennial.
Yeah, exactly, you know, and and the new town center and the new opportunities we have to use the center, the town center. You know, because this really is our there, there now.
And with regard to the park, we've done a lot of work on the park.
And we're gonna upgrade that, the playgrounds. So anyway, I think that from, I think we're really all saying the same thing. And we're all in agreement about uh that we want to do the survey. We want to involve all the, as many people as possible and get input, but we don't want to push it out. And I just want to say about the uh consultant, because I've gone through a couple of these, uh, and we did hire Godby and we hired another company. Um, and they come and they start asking us, what is your city like? They don't have all the answers and they, you know, but they know how to put together the survey and how to deliver it and stuff like that.
Yeah, they're, they're the ones that would work with that committee group with staff and and the subcommittee of the council to help craft. What the issues are, what some of the questions and concerns are. Um, so what I'm hearing is bring it back as part of the budget amendment, put a number in there and start the process to put an RFP on the street to find a consultant. This year and then with a target of a January release or work with the consultant to identify a good time to release.
Yeah, but I'd say target, the focus should be, let's try to get it. Close to where we want it by September. I mean, we can certainly, we've got four more months given the January timeframe, but. I like, I like not just letting it languish, but moving it forward.
Right.
I'd like to ask a procedural question. Early, I was saying that they have these city satisfaction questions. As well as we're talking about having all our individual group satisfaction questions. How do we collect the questions that are city specific that would be for fellow council members? So if I create a subcommittee, we're only able to talk to this group when we're all together. So if we wanted to propose something like green infrastructure or flooding or um, you know, some of the bigger issues to our town. What, what's the level of interest in undergrounding wiring? Those would come from us. So how would we do that?
There's two ways to do that. Uh, one is you wait till that September timeframe, the survey's already, you know, gelling together with all the input from the other committees. Then it's gotta make its way back to the council, the full council and a public meeting, and you provide full council input. Those members that haven't had a chance to participate provide that input. Alternative number two is we host a goals meeting.
All right.
With, we host a goals meeting with the council and we also use that meeting to provide full council input into what a survey.
George, come on, come on, George.
That's, that's the best excuse for the the goals meeting I've ever heard. Yeah, yeah. All right, so there, there's more than one way to collect that information. Because I do want it to be also town centric, not just, you know, the, our.
And there, and there could also be a check in along that six month period of time.
Yeah, the committee can come back to the council at any time and everybody can participate.
Right, right. It just, it just, yeah, a couple of ways to do that.
Okay, item three.
Any more questions on that one? And any more public comment on that one? Okay, let's go to, we're moving fast today. Next one, receive and file mid-year budget report, and this is Robert.
You should have a few charts, right?
Fortunately, not today, no charts. Uh, sorry about that. Disappointing. There my computer?
I think it might, like.
I think it's me, I'm electric.
Yes.
You are.
I apologize, I don't know.
There, you're getting a new one.
Okay, this is. Thank you, um, Mayor, um, Council, members of the public. Uh, before you is the uh mid-year, uh, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four mid-year budget report. It highlights the current year expenditures, year-end estimates, and then identifies any significant issues which may impact the coming budget. You have your staff report before you. Uh, revenues are expected to exceed uh projected uh projections for the fiscal year by one million four thirty-nine. To a projected total of twenty-five point two million in revenue. It's an increase of the adopted budget of twenty-three point seven million. Um, these are primarily due to increases in our property taxes, ERAF charges for services and other revenues. Uh, the mid-year report for twenty-three, twenty-four also projects that our expenditures increase of uh increase of three hundred sixty-five thousand. To twenty point two million. Again, these are primarily due to one-time expenditures for operations and maintenance. In summary, the mid-year has a net positive change uh for uh increase in revenues or expenditures of one million. Uh, resulting in a projected year-end fund balance of twelve point zero seven million, and this is inclusive of reserves. On page two of your staff report, um, I'm gonna do some highlights of the staff report, the twenty-three. The twenty-three, twenty-four budgeted property tax revenue is at fifteen point one two six million. The anticipated uh twenty-three, twenty-four reflects a slight decrease of two thousand five ninety-three. Of that, though, uh, secured and unsecured property taxes show an increase of one hundred eighty-one thousand uh for the fiscal year. Uh, the property tax in lieu of EOF reflects a decrease of one hundred eighty-four thousand, so that's why you have that net decrease of two thousand five ninety-three. That's due to the VLA, VLF shortfall uh for twenty-three, twenty-four. So overall, our property taxes are are on, in line with, with uh. The caveat of the VLF shortfall. The twenty-three, twenty-four ERAF budget, we budgeted two point three, three million in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. We received our ERAF and the amount we received is two million six hundred thirty-three thousand, so that's an increase of three hundred three thirty-three thousand. In twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, the franchise fees should have gone up because we raised our trash rates by eleven percent. We get ten percent of that.
On the franchise fees. Uh, I, I will, I think we had booked that in there initially. Uh, in, in the year, fiscal year budget. So you're saying in January of this year?
Yeah, January of this year, they went up eleven percent.
Okay.
January of next year, they go up eleven percent.
I'll, I'll verify that.
We're also getting eighty-six percent diversion and meeting our. Uh, California propositions without fines.
Huge increase.
And the services outstanding. It is. I've seen guys getting out of the trucks, straightening the barrels to make sure they're proper.
Comment.
If it is, I can comment on it because the, the, the garbage fees have gone up, but they've gone up way less than they would have gone up if we'd been on the recology. So, but, I mean, let's face it, everything's going up.
Yeah, because we've been paying through the nose for them.
It's noted.
That's okay, no problem, no problem.
Continue.
And regarding the, the ERAF, uh, again, we received it's three hundred thousand more than what we budgeted. And um, this current uh ERAF in the budget was used towards allocation of the amount, um, CIP. And allocated toward town CIP. The council will review the ERAF during our budget cycle uh for twenty-four, twenty-five and at that time. Included as a direction for.
Oh, is that three hundred and thirty-three thousand the same amount that Rick and I wanted you to put in right at the get-go?
Uh, I, well, I think initially, we, it was two point three million.
We did two point three million. In the past, I think we've done one point five.
No, but we, we spoke to Robert at the time about, this is the budget. We, we spoke to Robert at the time about that we felt that he always underestimated it.
Yeah, we wanted it to be around two point one or two point two.
Yeah.
Council wanted a little higher.
Little higher, so we'll, we'll review that at, at during.
But as, as Jason just indicated earlier in this meeting.
Yeah, I would not get comfortable with this number.
And, and, and ERAF two is always a.
Could be taken away.
Correct, and, and there's only three counties throughout the state that have excess ERAF and, and it's the Bay Area counties. Yeah. And so eventually, you know.
The ones where most of their politicians get their lobbying money.
And on the caveat of that, ERAF is not included in the town's operational um revenues. So we, we always keep that below the line, uh, and, and we have, we've always done these, the practice of, of uh using ERAF. For capital projects or one-time expenditures, so we continue to do that and um balance our. and um balance our budget based off of, for some reason, it never, it we don't receive it anymore. It's not on our operations. It's additional. The other revenues in the staff report, the planning and building revenues were were anticipated increase about five hundred half a million. And this is due to the projection in the permit fees that are expected to go, in fact, the increases in March. Our police revenues, we experienced some increase of two hundred seventy-six thousand. That's due to donations we received for a health and wellness program that the PD started uh this fiscal year and various training um skills, services training uh that we received donations from. The park road revenue revenue is down currently uh due to no longer having catering too as the park event manager. Uh we anticipate that during the next fiscal year that we'll have that, that those revenues will come back up as we get a new park event manager. At mid-year, there's additional need for three hundred sixty-five thousand in expenditures appropriations. So there's four areas within um our general fund that needs additional appropriations. The building department budget, it was increased, the contract expenditures due to the revenue increase uh is adjusted, it needs to be adjusted by two hundred forty-three thousand. Again, this is just based off of revenue since it's a contract um for our building services. So if revenue does not go up, this expense does not go up. Uh so indoor department budget, we had to increase it by forty-seven thousand, and this was due to additional IT support services that we need to maintain our service delivery levels. Um we're supposed to maintain them at about two point five, three days. Now, we're still continuing to maintain them at four point five. Uh and a lot of it's due to complexities with our services, our servers, um our networks and some due to some upgrades here at the PD. And then in the next year's budget, we'll we'll plan for that. So. This this for, no, our IT.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah. Um that's real gold.
Oh, did they give those out?
They did. You didn't get one.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. So Robert.
Thank the lot.
On the uh, on the revenue increases.
Yes, sir.
Um what was the police increase of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars due to?
One hundred ninety-five thousand of that was for the uh health and wellness program.
Okay, oh, for their donations.
Correct, correct. So, yeah, the police revenue, the majority of it is is all donations. Um twenty-five thousand of that increase was because we received the um our SRO. Um re- um reimbursement based SRO uh contract with uh MA. So um we initially had that in the budget for seventy-five and we received a hundred thousand for it.
Right.
So that was, that increases forty-seven thousand for IT services for remainder of the year. Um the police department is seeking fifty-five thousand in additional appropriation expenditures, and this is for overtime backfill and training. Um the public works department had an increase of twenty thousand. Again, this is due to catering to no longer uh providing our park event services. We anticipate to issue an RFP in the next couple of months, and uh we don't anticipate to have new services on board until probably June, July. So until that, uh we've engaged a temporary employee to manage the events here at the park. And this is a one-time cost of twenty thousand. Uh with our revenue and expenditure adjustments, this provides a mid-year net positive of one million seventy-four and to overall positive uh net change in fund balance of five million. Our projected year-end fund balance is twelve million seventy-two for end of twenty-three, twenty-four. And this includes ours eight hundred sixty-one for our CRT uh debt service. This three hundred sixty-five uh media adjustments and expenses, and it transfers out of five point eight nine million to CIP. This can lead to my staff report. You have any, a resident, the budget resolution will come to the council at February twenty-fourth.
That was one of your best presentations.
Can I do public comment first or question? Do we have any public comments or questions in the room or online? Nope, go ahead.
I have a question. Um Robert, thank you so much for putting all this together, and I just have a question about the planning. Our uh twenty-three, twenty-four budget of one million six seventy-four is the same for year-end estimate. So was all the expenses for the housing element already baked into that number?
Yes, ma'am.
So um I guess going back, I should have gone back to uh twenty-two, twenty-three budget. I mean, how much uh was the planning?
Majority of the um the the housing element, it was start, half of it started, a portion of it started in twenty-two, twenty-three. And and then the remainder amount uh was budgeted in twenty-three, twenty-four. The planning component is close to just the planning services is about nine hundred thousand of this one point.
Okay, I was going to ask that question, yes. Thank you. About not, almost a million dollars.
Correct, for the new planning.
For the.
Yeah, that's what we put in, that's what was the explanation.
To your point.
Increased it, yeah.
And you know, so thank you very much, Kate, all right, for doing it, uh making us spend this. And if they take away our ERAF, which is um something, but we never put ERAF money into this operational, right?
Uh no, well, it's twofold. I think um one, there's the housing element component. The second part is is we have a planning service staff contract that is, was higher, is higher than our previous planning.
Right.
Um professional services. One, the staffing of it is we have more staff level and it's a higher contract, so a cost for our planning services.
But but you're right, ERAF is not baked into our operational costs. So if we do lose ERAF, where we're really losing that from is streets, roads, drainage, infrastructure. We count on ERAF for those sorts of things. It built this town center in large part. It was able to cover that gap that we had from Atherton now.
We may need to do another parcel tax to cover drains, drainage and roads.
Maybe, maybe. I'd be with you on that.
You'd be in on, in on that?
For flooding, yeah.
Yeah, for flooding? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to adjourn.
No, I have things.
Any comments?
I have comments. Um sorry, I want to stay here forever. Um one of them is that our leaf blower rebate program is about fifty percent um spent, and we're not going to start enforcing until July. I think there are kind of two populations. There's the population who knows about the leaf blower rebate now and are taking advantage of it. And then there's the whole group of people, probably the majority of Atherton, who's going to find out about it when we start code enforcing in July. So at the rate that we're going through our rebates, I think that might be gone by the time we start enforcing it. And it would be a nice way to soften the enforcement warning system if we could include a flyer about the rebate program for some period of time to help that adjustment.
Yeah, I I was asked about that specific program uh by a neighbor the other day. Does that include buying extra batteries?
I don't know.
It's two hundred and fifty dollars towards any leaf blower.
Or accessories?
Yep.
Okay, so they can get batteries and things like that.
And 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 it's a limit of two hundred fifty thousands, I mean, two hundred, two hundred, yeah, two hundred fifty dollars, sorry. Per house. Many numbers.
Per household, right?
Correct, and and um some, I've seen purchases that come in that have been well beyond that amount. So, but they only get the two hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Right, okay, then how do they apply for that?
Commercial.
There's a, it's it's online.
Online, it's talking.
Yeah, because I've been asked that too.
But I think Councilmember Holland's concern is we're going to run out of the twenty-five thousand that the council allocated in the current fiscal year budget, probably by the end of this fiscal year. So when we start next fiscal year, start issuing the warning citations first, there's no rebate unless the council either rebudgets it or budget some additional money in the current fiscal year.
Go ahead, Rick.
So we've uh had fifty-five uh people get the two hundred and fifty dollars. That leaves us forty-five remaining. It seems to me that that's going to cover us through this fiscal year. So I don't see a reason to do a mid-year adjustment because we got enough for the fiscal year. But I think we should include in the next budget money to increase it because I think it's reasonable that once there's enforcement, which really means probably more media because I don't know what enforcement means. Because I I don't think any policeman's coming down my cul-de-sac trying to see what my gardener is using when he's blowing my driveway. Although my, they might come look at me, and if they do, I'm going to make sure they look at yours, but.
Well, you just shut your gate.
I don't think they're going to look at my neighbors. You will as soon as you move back into your house. So. So anyway, my point is, I don't see, and I I I'm not adverse to doing mid-year adjustments, but I don't think we need to do it. I think we should include it in the budget. And and the question is, well, how much did we include in the budget, which I guess we can discuss when we discuss the budget? Well, we have more budget than we thought we'd have by five million dollars if I look at it.
Need to hold some in reserve. We need those. Well, no, we need to react to what the people say in the survey. So we need to save some of that money.
Anyway, my point is, I think this is definitely a good thing to look at. I just don't think we need to do it at the mid-year.
I agree.
Yeah, the other topic I'd like to see on the radar, maybe not in midterm, but speaking of what she was saying is flooding and extra money toward dealing with flood. It's green infrastructure, because that's been uh something I've been hearing a lot from residents. Lived here thirty years, it's been ridiculous that we can't do anything about it. So it's one thing I'd like to have us discuss in our next round of budget stuff.
Yes, I'm sorry, I missed that.
She wants to talk about drainage on ECR.
Flooding and drainage. Just want to make a little antidote on that. If you uh look back in our heritage, you know, this Centennial brought to uh um our awareness of, it's been flooding along El Camino Real since the very beginning, and they had a hard time. They could not get rid of the flooding. So in, when it rains in Atherton, it floods along El Camino and in other intersections and along our streets because we do not have sidewalks. We do not have uh storm drains throughout town that catches the water and takes them. The sides of the streets act as the little river that flows down to El Camino.
Right.
And it goes into that, and then it's overwhelmed.
That's where the green infrastructure comes.
Green infrastructure, yeah, bioswells, but we hired an engineer to review this, right, or we're in the process of?
Yes, we we do have an ongoing design type work. Um but one of the things I was going to mention is I think uh Councilmember DeGoli, Vice Mayor Lewis, and Councilmember Widmer were all part of the tour that we did with Steve Tyler, where we walked the channel, we went all the way up to Valley and came down and all of that. But Councilmember Holland and the mayor have not been, so.
Invite.
Yep. I asked Robert to put together something for the two of them to look at. Uh so we'll, we'll take that, a similar tour, not the same tour, but a similar tour, and it'll help give you the picture of where the life safety priorities are for drainage infrastructure throughout town versus nuisance flooding versus concerns that we have and where we we budget some projects, and we'll talk about that project that.
However, drainage discussion is not on the agenda.
That's correct. I was just mentioning that for the benefit of the council.
Just would like to tell you, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to commend the Public Works Director and the staff for.
Do you have another question?
Clear.
Yeah.
Oh, come on, finish.
Go ahead. I have one, and I warned George that I was going to do this, that I had suggested or asked George to um ask for money to fix our email outreach for the town. And so you don't need to have answers today, but I would love to see when we, this comes back in front of the budget. If you think that you guys need more money is to have the content, the very excellent content that you guys write in the body of the email and not at a link. So I don't know if that's an upgrade with.
Yeah, we'll have to talk to.
It's, you get like.
I like the link.
You have to click the link, so the people are going quickly, are not reading the email, and so I'm just.
It has a little paperclip on the side.
Wait, this warrants a whole agenda item.
Oh, no, it's a budget thing, so I asked him to have a proposal for us to talk about it the next budget. Meaning, I don't know if it's, so, sorry, George, it did warn me.
It did warn me, so the the conversation is around more of the the news flash, uh the news flashes that go out in the community that are very short snippets of text and then a read-on kind of click, and that drives the reader to the website.
Oh, I see.
But it's very short and it's in contrast to the Civic Send, the Atherton Online uh and the blog, the you know, after-meeting notes that I send out. Those are full context emails with links in them as well, but the reader can read through the entire narrative of what's being sent out in their email box instead of clicking it, having to be driven to the website. So looking at some sort of.
I agree with you.
Yeah, so my, my thing, I told him, I was like, I, you guys write good content, I want people to see it. If you guys need more money to have that show up in the email, then ask for it at the budget.
Right, we we'll reach out to Civic Plus and see if our webmaster, and see if there is a module change that can be done. Uh for that, alternatively, well, news flashes are designed to be very quick because, you know, the three that were in the meeting today, that dispatcher, one of the things she did not mention, is while they're doing all of that, they're also the ones that have to write that news flash and send that out to the community about the tree down or the flooding or whatever's going on amidst all the other things they're doing, because there's nobody else to do it. And so it's, it's designed to be a very quick email, very quick link to send them to a larger narrative. We can adjust how we use news flashes and create, you know, those emergency ones with the smaller snippets. But the larger dialogue with the community of information, we'll use Civic Send or something else uh to create a larger narrative. That's one solution. Another one is to use Constant Contact, which you get your Friday emails in Constant Contact format. That's a very popular one. It doesn't interface with the website as easily as a baked-in uh news flash, but we'll look into that.
The news flash has a character.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How the benefits that we can make the homepage, which we can't do.
Right, that's what I'm just like, figure out if you need more money for us to give to you for this is my, was my recommendation.
Thank you.
Hey, this is a future agenda item about how to improve outreach to residents. And it's not on today's agenda.
No, but.
And while we're on items that aren't on today's agenda. I think that if we're going to do a tour of the channel, we should do a tour of El Camino Real where the drains have been plugged up by Redwood City.
Yep.
We should go walk and look at where those, where.
Actually, there's nothing to see there.
I don't think we need to. We can walk along El Camino, just like the mothers with babies do.
Rick, there's little to see there at the very end, but what there is to see is that they built a tra- uh bus stop that's right directly in the path of the water and it.
All I'm saying is, we should.
So yes, we can do more than just the channel.
See, but we've talked about this a lot.
Absolutely, I totally agree.
I agree with you.
And I think that's, yeah, there's a lot of change that's gone on both in this council line and Redwood City and it warrants us to have a discussion and it's not on the agenda for today.
So, but we do have a, Doug Kim is assigned to help project manage that, so you will be seeing something that will include some description of what the real issues are along there and how they can be addressed. That'll actually come before the council at a future meeting.
Is that the the consultant, the, the, wait a second, I have one last question before we go. Can I, can I ask that question? Was that the consultant that we are hiring to do the water survey for us, the water problem?
On El Camino?
The whole city was, is that included in that?
No, we don't have anything going on for the whole city. The green infrastructure is a whole different deal than El Camino Real and the drainage on El Camino Real. It's Doug Kim that's managing those projects for us.
So happy to have all.
Yeah.
Okay.
One, one of the the issues that has been brought to my attention is that there was a new bus stop put in on El Camino, and it was put in above ground, you know, above the grade. And that's also backing up the water, which when they put it in, I would assume that we had some oversight in improving it, but now it needs to have like pipes put underneath it.
It's uh, it's a bus pad, uh it's, it already existed, but it was replaced, and there is no drainage along there. It's all surface.
Well, no, but the water backs up there.
All right, you guys.
But again, we can talk, I talk offline about it.
Let's take it offline, but I do want to ask one question before I close out the meeting, which is on the council reports and comments. And I'd like to ask my fellow council members, in the past, um one of the people who was the mayor, they had. one of the people who was the mayor, they had people report back. So once a month, we were, we're all on committees and we go out and we go out to the committees. And I am spacing on his name, but he had everyone come back and give a report or on those things. How do we feel about actually sharing information, instituting that again?
So, Diane, there's a policy that we all had to do.
We wrote them.
We did. We wrote them and we either submitted or in the very beginning, it was an oral report at that council meeting.
But at the beginning in about twenty thirteen, then there was about three years.
Yeah, but there was once, it was once a year.
Rebellion by certain council members that said, I'm not going to do any, not going to do.
So how does everyone feel about it now? Because it does serve a very valuable thing because the whole reason we have these people go out is that you're representing all of us and you need to come back and tell us. But if we never hear about it, we don't hear about it. But I don't want to overburden people. So I'm asking, what is everyone's opinion?
I I don't want to have it discussed at the meeting and make the meetings longer than they already are. So I would, if you want to report a written report, I don't have a problem delivering a one-page every six to twelve months.
So Councilmember Lempres, when he was mayor, instituted during his term that in July, the council would have a study session as part of the regular study session. Everybody would report out on their various committees that they participated in. So it was once a year. That was the council member you're talking about.
Is that doable or not doable?
It's over a period of a year.
Went to the shop again.
What would work?
That was what he instituted.
I think, I think your request is perfectly valid and appropriate as a mayor. I can tell you from experience, from when I started on the council in twenty thirteen and I think for about three years, we did reports. It was uneven as to how often a council member did them. But at least two council members, and I think more, did a report, a written report every month.
That's a lot, though.
And it took so, and and when we stopped it, it was a relief to stop because it took a lot of time.
Yeah. See, that seems like a lot, but what would be appropriate by everyone's view?
It's it's like a summary report instead of just a chronological, you know, I went to this meeting, that meeting or whatever.
Yeah, no, it's. It's contentful.
Yes.
And that's why it took time. And and it was good. I mean, you got to know what other people did.
So how do you get it manageable so they were not asking a report?
City of Redwood City, you can go to their council meetings. Every council member has to submit a written report. I.
Every month.
Every month.
Every month.
And it's very detailed, you know.
That's how ours work.
Remember Barbara Person?
Yeah.
She was always, I was on several.
I don't know. That's how ours work.
How would you feel about doing just a, like a bullet point summary once a year or or how frequently? Well, right now we do zero. If you're looking at me like we do zero. So I'm asking, like, how much can I get? Yeah.
From then.
Yeah.
Now.
Yeah.
Is that almost every agenda and every minutes of all these other nitties are at your fingertips. They're online. You can go and you go to ECE and you can read what their agenda is.
That's, that's true, but nobody does. Yeah, but people don't do that realistically. They barely do the ones you go to yourself.
I think I think what's important, though, about reporting out is if there is a critical issue that you are facing on one of your appointed boards or committees, uh, that you bring that to the council as part of your council reports or council input into that process if there's something critical that's coming up on your agendas.
I would go, I would even go farther to say I would welcome anybody who wants to give a very short, at the end of a meeting, on what's happening if it's relevant, if it's relevant. Yeah. If it's relevant. If it's relevant. All right, adjourned.
We are adjourned. Good night, Mona.
Good night. Thank you.